I know there's people concerned about economic growth and opportunities for young people. There's people thinking about our place in the world and how Canada is, you know, dealing with a somewhat unruly neighbor these days. Maybe not unruly, maybe unpredictable sometimes. You in the Canada t-shirt. Yes.
Hi there. Thank you so much for taking my question. Thank you for showing up here tonight. Excellent. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I know it's a long trip for you. I was just curious how you feel about being the first prime minister ever found guilty of a federal crime?
As you can see, we thoroughly vetted the questions before showing up tonight. No, sorry. I'm gonna have to ask more. What crime is that?
Well, right. Okay. So, well, there's the Ethics Commissioner who was... Who said that you going to the Aga Khan Island on the helicopter was actually deemed to be a federal crime. Now, I've read that you said that he was a longtime family friend of yours, which is great if he is, you know, that's great. Except that if he is a longtime family friend of yours since you've known since you were a kid, you probably not supposed to be giving money to his foundation. And if he is a lobbyist and you are giving money to his foundation, you probably shouldn't take bribes from him.
Okay. I think I got enough to work with on that question. First of all, you know, there's a level in which this shows that our system works. We have an Ethics Commissioner who is there to ensure that parliamentarians, all elected officials, including the Prime Minister, follow the rules and make sure that they're exercising their responsibilities to serve their country in the right way, in a responsible way. And what we saw through this situation was that even though, yes, I consider him to be, and he is, a longtime family friend, the Ethics Commissioner quite rightly points out that there should be a higher bar for friendship for someone with the position and the responsibilities of the Prime Minister. And I absolutely agree with that and I accept that. And that's why going forward, every single one of my vacations will be cleared in advance with the Ethics Commissioner because it's really, really important to me to highlight that we follow the rules. Now, there've been a lot of partisan back and forth on this and that's all part of the way politics is done. It's pushing and shoving and attacking and this and that. But at the core of it, the Ethics Commissioner is the person who makes the determination of whether the right things happen or the wrong thing happens. And I fully accept that if I had to do it all again, I would have worked with the Ethics Commissioner from the outset, even though this was a friend and we would have followed the recommendations that the Ethics Commissioner gave on this, whatever they were. And you can be sure that moving forward, that's exactly what will happen. This is something that I take very seriously and I think Canadians can and should take very seriously because people expect a lot of their Prime Minister and they're right to. People expect a lot of their elected officials and they should. And that's why the service that I offer as Prime Minister is grounded in trying to do right by the people who entrusted me with this responsibility. And I will continue to work very hard every day to serve you well and to build a better Canada for us all. Merci beaucoup. Thank you for your question.
My name is Bill Duff. I am married and a father of two young children. I'm also currently a serving member in the Royal Canadian Navy. Last year, I was diagnosed with ALS. The average life expectancy for someone with ALS is two to five years. In June 2016, Bill C14 was passed, which gives you the right to assist a death. If it is my right to be able to choose death due to my terminal illness, why am I not allowed the right to try experimental drugs that have passed a phase one medical study in Canada? Why are the only options given to me by the Canadian government are to choose to die now? Wait to die when what I want is the right to try?
We have to make sure that we're going through rigorous scientific processes in terms of what is going to work, what is going to be effective. But I certainly understand your desire, your drive to make sure that you are... You are there for your kids as long as they will ever need you. And that is something that we both share as a goal.
If you're in my position, would you want the right to try?
I'd want to try everything. I'd want to fight every minute of every day to have, you know, extra time here in this beautiful place with my beautiful family.
Hello, Prime Minister Trudeau. My name is Scott Shapew. I'm a resident of Lower Sackville. Welcome to our beautiful community. Currently working in healthcare as a respiratory therapist. So, reflection of my profession or my employer is surely my opinion. So, your government is very well known as pushing forward towards legalization of marijuana in July of 2018. And I personally am not a supporter of marijuana. However, as a healthcare professional, I've tried to look at the medical benefits and I have seen in patients with chronic illnesses, chronic pain, they have found benefits. So, what I'm looking at here is the CMA, the Canadian Medical Association, has advised your government that the minimum age should be no younger than 21 with preferred age of 25. So, why do you and your government believe that you know better than the doctors supporting our country and our healthcare system of what age should be legal for these youth? Because at the age of 18, it can easily get into the high schools, leading to the junior highs. Then you're having kids addicted at young ages. So, why do you guys know better than our healthcare professionals?
This may surprise you, but I agree. I agree that marijuana is problematic for the developing brain. Right now, the current system we have means that, I'm sorry to contradict you on this one, but there's already marijuana in our high schools. It's already easy for kids to buy marijuana. So, right now, we have a system that isn't working to protect our young people. And I'm saying, and we're saying, that if we at least treat it as stringently as we treat alcohol, it'll be more difficult for folks who are underage to actually purchase it. But I think that by controlling and regulating the sale of marijuana, better be able to keep it out of the hands of our kids. We're gonna be able to take some of the profits from marijuana. And that's not the point of the exercise, have you seen, with the level of taxation we're bringing in? We really want to displace the black market. Discussion about age levels was a really important one as well. Because yes, we've seen the same studies that certainly say that the developing brain of a teenager is more vulnerable to the use of marijuana. But that yes, there are potential nefarious and negative impacts as they grow older into the age of majority as well. But we also know that setting the age too high simply encourages the continuation of a black market as people can't get it.
My name is Carly Sutherland. I have a nine-year-old son, Callum. He is severely impacted by autism. He is so violent that he cannot go to school. I'm physically assaulted multiple times daily. I've had to stop working as a special education teacher in order to be home and oversee his care. I do not qualify for federal EI benefits for compassionate care because he's not dying. There's no publicly funded therapy available for him in this province because he's now over the age of six. The cost of caring for him and providing appropriate therapies far exceeds the funding provided to us by the provincial government. And the only reason that we haven't lost our hosts is because my friends crowdfunded for us. Families like mine should not have to subsidize healthcare and education for their disabled children. This is a fundamental human rights issue. I'm a proud Canadian, but this story does not align with our national values and this troubles me profoundly. In 2007, the Senate released a report entitled "Pay Now or Pay Later: Autism Families in Crisis", and their number one recommendation was autism, a national autism strategy. How does your government plan to address this crisis? And where do they stand on a national autism strategy?
I... No, actually, I can imagine how difficult things must be for you. And I'm so proud of the community that has supported you and the obvious, very strong network you have around you. This is something that so many families across this country face in dealing with autism spectrum disorder. And it's something that we all have to do a better job working together to address. The federal government is investing significant amounts of money in the Canadian Institute for Health Research to go at how we do better job dealing with ASD. We know that there are many great stakeholder and support groups out there that we continue to fund. We recognize that education and healthcare delivery are very much a responsibility for the provinces. But there is more that the federal government can and is doing on the research side, on the advocacy side, on the support side.
Right now, Canada authors are not considered successful until they sell books in America. What can you and I both do to help create a strong Canadian arts culture?
We've got to recognize that our creativity, each and every one of us, our capacity to dream, to create, to share our passions, our inspiration with our loved ones or with our neighbors or with the world is an essential part of what makes us human. And how we support the arts, I mean, particular, I'm a Quebecer and we've used arts as a way of defending our language and our culture for a long time and it's wrapped up in identity, but so have Canadians. I mean, the stories we tell as Canadians to each other around the world, stories of diversity, stories of neighbors helping neighbors, stories of challenges, how art challenges us and inspires us and shows us what we want to be and shows us what we don't want to be is an essential part of a society. Particularly as we approach a world in which more automation and AI and robotics and computing becomes more and more impactful in our daily lives, our ability to be creative becomes more and more important. And that's why one of the promises we made and kept when we came into office was to double the funding for the Canada Council for the Arts and we did that. Our commitment was to restore funding to the traveling programs that share Canadian art around the world, of increasing the funding for the CBC so we can continue to tell our stories across the country the way we know we need to and bind us together through our differences around our shared values.
It's a pleasure to stand before you today, Mr. Trudeau. But as a young man, I am deeply concerned with the growing numbers in mental health. Your government has promised, well, to my understanding, that is, a 10-year, $5 billion contract to make a difference. I think that's true at least. How will this make a difference to our education and our healthcare systems? And how will this change for the better? Will our Canadian ways of empathy, compassion, and action reach out to those who are suffering?
And to see the level at which young people are not just actively destigmatizing conversations around mental health, but demanding change and demanding and shaping the response of our school communities, of our communities at large, of our leadership on actually grappling with and overcoming the challenges around mental health is really inspiring. I mean, for me, well, like so many of us, I've, you know, been challenged throughout my life with a family member, my mom, who I adore, who's been struggling with bipolarity all her life and has done an amazing job of sharing her stories and her struggles and destigmatizing and leading and pushing on that. And I couldn't call myself a proud son of my mother if I wasn't leading a government that was seriously and deeply committed to showing leadership and moving forward and making, dealing with mental health, whether it's PTSD or addictions or suicide or just helping young people grapple with the first symptoms. This really matters.
Hi there. Thank you so much for taking my question. Thank you for showing up here tonight. Excellent. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I know it's a long trip for you. I was just curious how you feel about being the first prime minister ever found guilty of a federal crime?
As you can see, we thoroughly vetted the questions before showing up tonight. No, sorry. I'm gonna have to ask more. What crime is that?
Well, right. Okay. So, well, there's the Ethics Commissioner who was... Who said that you going to the Aga Khan Island on the helicopter was actually deemed to be a federal crime. Now, I've read that you said that he was a longtime family friend of yours, which is great if he is, you know, that's great. Except that if he is a longtime family friend of yours since you've known since you were a kid, you probably not supposed to be giving money to his foundation. And if he is a lobbyist and you are giving money to his foundation, you probably shouldn't take bribes from him.
Okay. I think I got enough to work with on that question. First of all, you know, there's a level in which this shows that our system works. We have an Ethics Commissioner who is there to ensure that parliamentarians, all elected officials, including the Prime Minister, follow the rules and make sure that they're exercising their responsibilities to serve their country in the right way, in a responsible way. And what we saw through this situation was that even though, yes, I consider him to be, and he is, a longtime family friend, the Ethics Commissioner quite rightly points out that there should be a higher bar for friendship for someone with the position and the responsibilities of the Prime Minister. And I absolutely agree with that and I accept that. And that's why going forward, every single one of my vacations will be cleared in advance with the Ethics Commissioner because it's really, really important to me to highlight that we follow the rules. Now, there've been a lot of partisan back and forth on this and that's all part of the way politics is done. It's pushing and shoving and attacking and this and that. But at the core of it, the Ethics Commissioner is the person who makes the determination of whether the right things happen or the wrong thing happens. And I fully accept that if I had to do it all again, I would have worked with the Ethics Commissioner from the outset, even though this was a friend and we would have followed the recommendations that the Ethics Commissioner gave on this, whatever they were. And you can be sure that moving forward, that's exactly what will happen.
Hi. My name's Adam Anthes and I just have a question. Why does it take so long to fax papers? And why do you think it's okay to give $10.5 million to a person that killed a soldier?
Okay. That's a great question. The question on fax machines, I don't know, fax machines have always been slow. That's why we have email now. But the question on Omar Khadr is an important one. Because it goes to something that Canadians have a right to expect from their governments. We have a Charter of Rights and Freedoms in this country, which means that we have to stand up for everyone's rights, whether you agree with them or not, whether they're good or popular or not. And the measure of a country has to be whether you take the easy way out because of politics or not. And you seem like you're pretty upset about the payment made to Omar Khadr. And you should be. And you should be. You have every right to be. Actually, everyone here should be upset. Because I am, that we paid money that could have gone to schools, could have gone to investing in any number of worthy causes. But, or absolutely, more money for veterans. But we have to remember that there is a lesson here for us, for all of us and for future governments, that when a government violates a Canadian, any Canadians' fundamental rights and allows them to be tortured, there are consequences and we all must pay. So, I want you to stay angry. I want all of you to stay angry to make sure that no government in the future did as governments of the past did and allowed a Canadian's fundamental rights to be violated. So, the question is not what Omar Khadr did or didn't do. That's being settled in other venues. The question is what the government of Canada did or didn't do.
I'm going to ask a question about the future and I'm glad that the Minister Bryson is here tonight. I am concerned that we have not done much to our debt and our deficit. We have been running a fairly high deficit the last two or three fiscal years. We are in, as MP Sampson said, in a very good financial situation. Alberta oil is starting to flow again. $63 a barrel today. So, I would like, without revealing your next budget, I ask your long-term vision on our national debt and national deficit.
The Conservatives said that they would balance the budget at all costs and, you know, that's what they felt the country needed. Regardless of the cuts that had to be made, they thought that getting that fiscal balance was the most important thing. The NDP said that they would balance the budget at all costs, regardless of what was needed in communities or what was needed to invest in. That balance was most important. We chose a different path. We said, you know what? After 10 years of the lowest growth rate since R.B. Bennett in the Great Depression, Canada needs growth. And in order to grow our economy, we need to start investing in our communities. We need to start investing in the folks who need support. That's why we put forward an incredibly ambitious investment infrastructure agenda that would be building community centers, roads, public transit, senior centers, green infrastructure to prepare for the future. Because we know getting people to work now on infrastructure projects that are going to be beneficial for the long term is a good thing to do. We were gonna start by lowering taxes for the middle class and raising them on the wealthiest 1%. And we were gonna deliver a Canada Child Benefit that's gonna help nine out of 10 Canadian families and lift hundreds of thousands of kids out of poverty. So, we set about doing exactly that. And you know what? It worked out even better than we hoped. We now have the best growth rate in the G7. We now have the lowest unemployment rate nationally since the Montreal Olympics in over 40 years. And again, it's not because of us. It's because we invested in all of you. Now, fiscal discipline is really important. And that's why we are proud that our debt-to-GDP ratio is among the lowest in the OECD and is getting lower. We are absolutely responsible and we're on a path back to balance.
My name is Eifai Isoko and you guys invaded our country at one time. But I have some questions since you mentioned...
Sorry, sir. I'm gonna have to ask you to stay at your seat or over there. Sure.
You mentioned that you do not want any other person to be abused in this country. Right now, we have someone who has been abused for more than 20 years by the Nova Scotia Government and by the government of Canada. And right now, he is sitting in segregation, which the UN says is a violation of his human rights. And the Canadian government is about to deport him back to Somalia. And his sister is here. So, this is messed up. So, we'd like you to stop this and also we'd like you to honor the treaties.
Hi, Justin. My name is Tume Abdi. I am Abdul Abdi's sister. And my question to you today was, why are you deporting my brother? How come you're not stopping it? We came here, he was six years old. I was eight going on nine. We got taken into the permanent custody of the government. They had all rights of us. They were our parents. They failed to get us the right paperwork we needed. They failed to get us our Canadian citizenship. He got in trouble with the law. He did his time. He served his time. Now that he got released, he got detained by immigration and now is looking at deportation. And no one's doing anything to stop it. So, my question to you is, if it was your son, would you do anything to stop this?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming here tonight. I'd like to thank everyone in the community who has rallied around and shared your brother's story because it's a really important one. And I know I speak for most of us here in this room and indeed across the country. When we saw how the care system failed your brother, how we saw how the challenges he's facing have impacted upon him and we saw that the real challenges that we're facing in the system, it has opened our eyes to something that many of us knew was ongoing in many communities but we continue to need to address. Anytime a government has to issue a deportation order or look at deporting someone, it's something we take very, very seriously. And I'm not gonna get into the details of a case, but I can assure you that as far as I know, there hasn't been any final decisions made yet. It's something we have to take very, very seriously. It's something we have to reflect on with compassion and with empathy and understanding on a case-by-case basis. And I can assure you that our immigration minister, who himself came to this country as a 16-year-old Somali refugee, understands the challenges and the situation that your family is facing right now. But the way we continue to believe in our immigration system is to know that our immigration system is strong and rigorous and fairly applied, that there are rules and there is a framework that goes through the evaluation process. And political pressure or arbitrary decisions based on popularity or pressure or not shouldn't be at the heart of our immigration system. That we have a system that is based on rules and principles but that also is compassionate and reflects on the individual cases. And we have immigrant doctors from different countries here who are not allowed to integrate into the system. And you said that differences is a source of problem solving. And I think if they are given training from the medical institutions in Canada and to be qualified for one, two, three years, they will do a great job. I'm serious. Second one is international. In March this year, it will be the third year that the poorest Arab country, the Yemen, is being bombarded by Saudi Arabia. And of course, supported by our southern neighbor, or at least, it is deaf and dumb to this crime. And I'm asking about the voice of Canada, the dissent. Canada is looked at as a country with human rights in high quality and we need to see that. We need to hear the voice of Canada saying, no. Stop killing children of Yemen. Thank you very much. We will ensure that our countries, whether it's doctors or engineers, the way we ensure that people who come here with skills are able to work in their profession is something we have to do a much better job of. This is particularly in regions like Atlantic Canada where we're proud that we're moving forward on an Atlantic growth strategy with a specific Atlantic immigration pilot. There is a tremendous opportunity for, you know, benefits to our communities on that. But you're absolutely right. There has to be a better process of training and re-qualifying for people who arrive. A second question on Canada's voice in the world. We are a country that in many ways is held in high regard. But there's always a challenge in going from saying the right things to actually having real and meaningful impact in the world. We have to be able to be part of the solution as well. And as we know, conflicts around the world are increasingly complex and multi-layered. And thinking about the best way of actually having those positive impacts in far-off places is, is a, is a real challenge for a country like Canada.
Prime Minister Trudeau, our military, our CMP veteran question to you is, will you take action this year and 2018 to terminate the CPP pension clawback issue that affects the welfare of, of Canada's veterans and their family at age 65 or sooner if disabled?
That we do, as a country, have a sacred and solemn obligation towards the people who've chosen to serve and to their families. The frame that we've taken on fulfilling that sacred obligation is not just about money, but it's also about services. It's also about giving support for PTSD. It's about recognizing the essential role that families offer in supporting their loved ones. As they supported them as they served, now they have to support them as they're broken. And how we do that is not just about money. It's about services and programs and support and training and retraining and help in allowing them to continue to have the kind of productive, impactful life that they certainly had as they served their country. We are moving forward on restoring a lifetime disability benefit, that pension-for-life issue for our most injured and most vulnerable veterans, the people who, because of terrible injuries, will not be able to work or contribute. And we are moving forward in a way that unfortunately will not satisfy everyone, but is doing what we can to support those brave women and men who have sacrificed so much for this country.
There's so much to say, and I've been sent here as a messenger, and I'll try to remember everything, but I'll try to be brief as well. My name is Michelle Paul, and I'm from here. I'm from this district, actually, this Spaganic district. And what I want you to know today is although there's so many issues that we could be talking about, I'll try to keep it brief, and I'll try to focus on our territory here in Mi'kmaq. Because right here in Mi'kmaq right now, we have an Eskasone 70% poverty. That's unacceptable. We have in Boletak, water that cannot be drank. It cannot be used. That's unacceptable. And on the Spaganic River, we have warriors at the treaty truck host who refuse to leave because Alton Gas is threatening to pour brine in our river system. That is unacceptable. So I was asked to come here by one of our district chiefs. But what he wanted me to say is this. Our original district governing systems are still intact. We are the rights holders here of this territory. When you campaigned, you promised a nation-to-nation relationship. You have been consulting, I guess, with AFN. You've been having, you know, talks with AFN. They are not a nation. They are not a nation. They do not speak for us. They do not speak for me. They do not speak for the Mi'kmaq. They may have a representative, but they do not speak for us. They are not a nation. So you must speak to the nation. You must speak to the people. You asked for this. You, you mentioned this in your speeches, and we, we've heard you. And these are our rights, and they're upheld in the Royal Proclamation of 1763. And they're recognized in the Canada Constitution, Section 35. You know. And I, I really appreciate you hearing me today, but because all the Canadians have now heard that an invitation has been extended to Mr. Trudeau, I'm hoping that somebody will get in touch with me, Michelle Paul. I'll give you my contact information later. I don't want everybody to know my contact information, but please, somebody with an earpiece, come and find me later. And I want to, I really, really, really want you to get in touch with us, and we want to meet.
So let's think internationally. Let's talk about international law and not just Canadian law. International treaty law trumps Canadian law. So we have, we are not an indigenous nation under Canada. We are an indigenous nation on a national level. And we have something under peace and, under the Peace and Friendship Treaties called, we have the rights to sell our wares, and we also have best advantage in trade. And so my question to you is, if we have best advantage in trade under international treaty law, then why are we the poorest people in the country?
Valuing and recognizing indigenous peoples in this land, Métis, First Nations, and Inuit as full partners on Turtle Island, on this extraordinary country called Canada that we build every day together. Recognizing that treaties have not been respected, that promises have not been kept, and that indeed successive generations of Canadian leaders have failed to uphold the honor of the crown in how we approach it. But this hasn't been just something that I said or that government has said, or even that indigenous people have been demanding. It's something that all Canadians, indigenous and non-indigenous, have been demanding. There is a recognition that we cannot be the country we like to pretend we are in our smug moments unless we recognize our failures, our mistakes, our not living up to the values that we hold dear. And that's why we have set along this road, this journey of reconciliation. And you both highlighted the complexities and the challenges we are facing of defining what is a nation-to-nation relationship, who our interlocutors must be, how we move forward in true partnership that respects rights and opportunities, how we fix education and trade and infrastructure and healthcare and services. But I will tell you one thing, one thing that we have learned over time. No matter how responsible or well-meaning or thoughtful the solution that comes out of Ottawa might be, it cannot be the solution if it comes out of Ottawa. It is indigenous people themselves, from one community to the next, who have to shape their own path, their own solutions.